We call a order for a public meeting on Monday, January twenty second. Stand for the plaid in a moment.
Introduce to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republican Party's hands, one nation under a invisible liberty and justice for all.
In our second session, we discussed the update on EGP loan due agency of L N O rego events. And we looked at personnel issues and also unfair labor agreements. It's called a roll.
Mr. Madonna? Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Cameron?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Madam Liston?
Yeah. Minutes of January eleventh, twenty twenty four, city council meetings will be divided to council by email prior to the January twenty fifth, twenty twenty four council meeting for your review. Presentations, we have none. Under public comments, we have one request to be heard. Do I need a motion to accept this, Ted? No, okay. Lorraine Golden, we have a request to be heard by Lorraine Golden. Under planning commission, commission reports, we have a tax amendment for City Church of Newcastle. We need a public hearing date for that commission, for that report.
So the next round of meetings would be Monday, February fifth. Just double check, but make sure we have enough. Public hearing must be advertised once a week or two weeks. Public hearing must be advertised once a week or two successful weeks. But the first half being at least fourteen days and not more than thirty days. So we didn't have fourteen days to see today.
It is Monday. So it'd be two weeks before, before February fifth.
Yeah, so maybe we should do it. Is there a maximum?
Thirty plus.
It must be advertised in more than sixty days or less prior to passage.
You know what, I'm sorry.
Do we have time? Because this is zoning laws. These times are different. Would we have time? Read this. Oh, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure if we, if she advertises it tomorrow, is that enough time to do it on the fifth?
No, we have time. We can, we can wait for the following meeting. We can, we have time.
Okay, so do you want to do it? We can do it on the nineteenth.
We can.
Um, we have enough time and that gives us, I feel like we might not have the full fourteen days if we try to do it on the fifth. Okay. Hey, you can do it on the eighth, but you already have a pension meeting at five fifteen that night. So we can move it to the nineteenth. How long do you want for that?
That's a Monday, right?
Yes.
Yeah, prior to the caucus.
Is that what you want? What's how much time? Five thirty? Or do you think you need more than a half hour?
No, I think we can do it at five thirty.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so that's February?
Nineteenth.
February nineteenth, five thirty P M. Public comments? We're going into that right now? Okay, Lorraine Golden. There you are.
Lorraine Golden, Newcastle. And the only comment I have is about
Your address?
No.
She did?
Not to go. Um, the only comment I have is about the vacant, um, council seat that is crying's. And I want to make a suggestion instead of having it open to, um, have people submit, uh, applications or whatever like they did with, uh, Cherry Rogers, is the next person who had the most votes, uh, I think would be the correct way to do it. I know that that's not how councils done it in the past, but I think that, that would actually be a very democratic way to handle that position. That's all.
Thank you, Lorraine. Appreciate it. Okay, and the petitions to vacate streets, alley, said Arizona map amendment request, there are none. Request to bid, we have two requests from a super paid hot mix and the sale of timber on city property. Bids to be seen and open, there are none. Bids open to refer to administration to recommendation, there are none. We have a number of resolutions for consider, for consideration, repository properties. Obviously, you're going to see the attached review for your review. Any questions to that?
I do, all right, a couple. As I was reading through that, she wants to use the two lots for parking and maintaining that lot. I was trying to find in our orders, do we have anything, uh, specific for parking? Administration or legal?
I mean, the, the zoning laws would apply, um, so if she can't, then she can't. I don't know what the restrictions are.
That was my other question as I was reading through.
Do we have restrictions?
Yeah, we have restrictions on, um, so if it's a vacant lot and it's, was a residential property at one time, she'd have to go through the process to allow it to be a parking lot. So, um, without seeing the, uh, actual lot, if it's not zoned correctly, she would have to go through the process, which does not, if you guys voted on that, um, her potential use of it, she would have to go. She couldn't do that as soon as she got, I know we ran into that issue with another gentleman. Parking's, um, trailer in that lot, where there's no, in the city of Newcastle, residential lots, you cannot park a vehicle on the grass.
I do understand. I would like to potentially turn it into a parking lot.
Sorry. Um, but yeah, so you know, you're, if you vote to approve this, it's not a vote to allow that use. That's sorry, until the next vote's taken.
She, she's here? She, yeah. Yeah, come on.
Yes, sir, I do understand that this is only
Your name, yeah.
My name is Tiffany Cooper. I do understand that this is only a potential use, which has a parking lot. Uh, my vehicles are currently being pounded by assault truck. Overall, I'd like to garden. I currently live at four oh seven Denver Avenue. And that's literally one house away. And I'd like to garden and that, that's the priority, the main priority for myself and my child, what we'd be doing daily in my day to day life with it. But otherwise, you know, the vehicles being powered by assault trucks is what, what caused my mind to go with the potential parking as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have clarification on the taxes that we didn't receive information? Do we?
I'm sorry, I didn't go behind the, the, you know.
Twenty-five dollars per third minute bank.
Okay, moving on. Planning commission member appointment. Resolution is needed to appoint Mrs. Kimberly Kylitis to the planning commission. A letter of interest is attached for your review and consideration. Questions, comments? I believe Ms. Kylitis is the assistant principal of Newcastle High School, or I'm sure, yes. Okay, no questions, moving on. Twenty twenty-three city demolition change order. Order, the current owner of three oh eight Battle Avenue demolished a structure which was included on the city's twenty-three demolition list. It has been recommended by the city engineers to remove this property from the existing contract and add seven twelve Cumberland Avenue for an additional cost of twenty-five hundred dollars. The photos of both properties are attached for your reference. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, move on. Twenty-three city planning change order number three. The city Newcastle sanitation authority needed additional paving stormwater work on Lunch Street to, to be, to be completed in an amount of sixty-nine thousand five hundred eighty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. A change order will be needed to increase the existing con, contract by that amount and be funded in its entirety by the N C S A. Questions or comments? Okay, moving on. First merit demolition change order. A resolution is needed for council approval of forty-one thousand to pay for half of the eighty-two thousand change order to be approved by the R D A for the completion of first merit demolition. This will be paid from the eight hundred thousand dollar funds received from the county. Question or comment? Okay, now, sir.
Is this the, is this the first change order of this sort, Ted?
Yes, this is the first change order. The change order came in significantly higher, um, in the amount of roughly a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Um, but through various negotiations and assessments that were done by, an evaluation that was done by R A R Engineering, we worked with the contractor and the R D A and the city to get that number down to eighty-two thousand dollars, which has been recommended by both the, you to the asbestos that was found in the building and the work that, the workload that was going to be added to it, both the, um, the asbestos engineer and the P U have agreed that that's the number to still let and, and work can be completed at that amount.
Now, uh, this is on for our approval on Thursday, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I, I think maybe this might be the time to just, uh, share with council, we have had a, a, another proposal for this. We've been contacted by, um, the, um,
Human services.
Human services under Paul Lynch, who's the chairperson. And what he proposed to council was that he will pay, or they will pay, human services will pay the eighty-two thousand dollars. And for that, um, they want to build on that area a parking lot. To be used for them and for us, uh, for free, for the residents of the city. Interesting part about that is that, um, obviously the green space will, will not be there then. It'll be a parking lot. So the issue in front of council will be, now, we can go ahead because what we don't want to do is have this stall the demolition. Uh, we can go ahead and I asked Mr. Lynch today that if we go ahead and, and agree to this, um, eighty-one thousand, uh, and we decide to go or discuss or go with his proposal, will he reimburse the eighty-one thousand? So. What are you saying, John?
He's saying, well, you don't think we own, who, who owns the property?
Well, yeah, who would, you mean after the demolition, who owns the property?
Who needs side control of forty-three percent?
I see.
But it's worth a discussion.
Yeah, it's worth a discussion because, you know, obviously, um,
Yeah, if we, so if we own it, I, I think we have to put it out for public.
Well, somebody has to own it.
Yeah.
Somebody has to own it. Yeah.
The property remains a repository and the, the R D A is overseeing the demolition of it. So when we, when it gets to, at this, at this juncture, we're looking at the, the demolish, to get the building down, get it raz completely.
Correct.
And future plans are to, like you said, for the vacant lot structure on there, that's already been negotiated with the county, um, with the funds that we received. So we would have to go back to the county and work with them to, um, get approval basically on if that's something that the funding, uh, at that time, or whenever the building's down, if, at the time of the building coming down, if that's going to be a change, um, that they would approve and accept. Um, but again, the, like Ted said, if after the building is down, it's put the que, the next question and the next step in the process is going to be identify who's going to be the owner of that property. In which I do believe the goal is for it to be the city and take it out of the repository and own it and maintain it as a vacant lot. Um, which I'm sure the county doesn't want to be in that property, you know, uh, as a parking lot either. And then we have to go through the process of, um, either exposing it to sale, um, or the, if we're going to, if somebody else is going to acquire. But we have to do those two steps first, discuss this with the county, um, due to the funding, uh, restrictions that are on it, and then, uh, identify the property, you know, who's the owner of the property.
And interestingly enough, they, again, we have time to do that.
Yeah, the time to do that.
There's time to do that. And then with, you know, the, the thing council will have to weigh is, is what's most feasible for us and what's most beneficial to us. You know, obviously, uh, if, if we're going to have any, my opinion is this, if we're going to have any economic development in our downtown, we're going to need more parking. That's my opinion, we're just going to need more parking. Um, and, and, and again, we have a vagrancy problem downtown. When I think of a green space, I, I see in the summertime, uh, all, all, many of the vagrancy problem we have downtown laying in our green space. I see that, I do. And that's counterproductive and can we want to do in our downtown? So, uh, this is something for us to weigh.
If you keep in mind, when you do put something out for bid, you don't have to pay the highest, it's, you can consider the use of the property and, um, you know, it's going to be most beneficial to the city, so.
And I certainly agree that the most, the most important thing right now is get that building down. That's it, get it down. So, and then we can entertain a proposal later. Okay, everybody's up to date? Good.
There you go.
Yeah, I don't think I want to make a decision based on, like, I understand what you're saying, the vagrancy problem. Well, we're talking about increased presence of our police force and everything like that, and all, all the things that we're trying to do with the police. Like, I don't want to just assume that we're going to have, you know, vagrants down. Now, the idea with this plot of land was that it would be, it would be a use space for, you know, the library, for people that live downtown. Uh, it would be a nice conduit from our main street to those businesses that are back off of, uh, off of, let's say, North Street there. So I just want to keep that in mind. Um, I don't think, and I don't know, I don't, I have my thoughts about turning that into a parking lot right in front of a parking garage, like, in a parking lot next to it. Um, so let's just weigh all those things.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely, I mean, you know, it's good, it's good information to have, but I think we need to really talk about it as a group as to what our vision is for that whole space.
Yeah, no question. I mean, that, that's a great point, you know, but I think what, what the, the question posed for us will eventually be, you know, do we have enough par, if we're going to have any economic development downtown, do we have enough parking downtown? That's number one. So, and number two, would it be more beneficial to have a green space? No doubt. But, but there are some issues, I mean, there's no question we have a vagrancy problem. I mean, there's no question.
Yeah, absolutely. But I don't want to make our decisions based on that, you know, we need to make our decisions to attack the vagrancy problem and, and look, uh, you know, and, and enact ordinances and do things that we've done in the last few months, but I don't want to make decisions based, you know, on our green spaces based on that, you know, we may have, uh, people hanging out there that, uh, you know, that are, that we do not want downtown, so.
Point one, Ted. Okay, any other questions? Okay. Uh, city paving change order number three. Newcastle sanitation authority needed additional paving, storm water on Lunch Street to be completed. Oh, wait, I haven't did this one. Let's move up the app, I'm sorry. Uh, this is an interesting one. Newcastle Podcast Studio and Sports Network, a resolution is needed to allow Newcastle Podcast and Sports Network and Westminster College to run the educational governmental channel through the Comcast franchise agreement. Questions, comments on this?
Can I speak to this?
Yeah.
Uh, so through our franchise agreement with Comcast, they, they give a free, uh, educational and governmental ch, channel to the, to the city. For the, I don't know, since the life of, of the franchise agreement, you know, Newcastle has not had a studio that was, that was equipped to actually run the station. So we, in the, there's a resolution on, I think it's from two thousand and eight, two thousand and ten, that, uh, the franchise agreement, um, I'm sorry, the channel agreement was given to, uh, Westminster College to, to just run. Just so there's some information on the, on that, on that channel. Um, and up to date, you know, we've actually explored this, I think in twenty twenty-one with the Lawrence County Sports Net. Um, and they decided ultimately because of the functionality of the actual station, you have to have, I don't know, some different connectivities. It wasn't able to be wireless and be used at different sites. So the Newcastle Podcast has asked, you know, to have the ability to do that because they're stationary at the Servicemat, uh, location. And they'd like to provide, um, some information to that. The, uh, important to note that the, the channel is fully managed by the city. So if there's, you know, schedule, obviously this will open up the door for us to be more involved in the scheduling and the communication and the collaboration of that channel and the management of it. So that will fall on, uh, on myself, um, and, you know, with the lack of experience that I have in terms of running a TV station, just work with the partners to, you know, organize all that. But, um, in terms of the, the goal and the purpose of it, I think it's something worth exploring. And by adding them to the, to the resolution, uh, with West, Westminster College, this would open up the door, um, to that to see if, you know, when it comes to governmental information, when it comes to ad, when it comes to any community type events, streaming, to be able to, to add to that channel. It will open up doors and some promotions for the city of Newcastle. Again, the feasibility of it all has not truly, fully been assessed, uh, but the interest is there. And as I said, the, the channel is, be a fully managed, it's pretty much always Mr. stuff right now because they've had the, you know, they've had it for so long. So yeah, we integrate some more city specific stuff to that, uh, would be the goal there.
Yeah, and it's, uh, actually, it's a, I, I think it's a really good thing because it gives us another media source, uh, for us to demonstrate to the people things that we're doing and keep the people informed in a different way. You know, obviously they can watch it right by their phone. It gives us a, a great source, uh, it gives us a great source for us to generate, let the, let the people know exactly what's going on in the city and what we're doing.
Bobby, of course, Newcastle said they didn't have this?
Uh, the Lawrence County Sports Net, um, because of the functionality of what they need. So primarily what they, what Westminster does from my understanding is that the, uh, the ability to do it, you have, they have to be stationary, they're unable to take that on the channel on the road, so they can't do. They, they did invest into a van that they would use for like a wave, you know, things that were happening on, on campus, but primarily, and that's primarily student ran, so as students changed, they collect.
Don't mind Westminster.
Yeah, Westminster College, they don't really use it as much, but, um, from their connectivity in Westminster, they're able to stream like basketball games, football games, any kind of concerts or things like that because of they have the connection, uh, connection at the station.
And we don't have a baseball?
No.
Uh, I don't think we do. I'm sure they're interested.
Yeah.
Well, they haven't shown it.
Well, well, what it is is we'll, we'll have full capacity and, and full use of the studio downtown, which is Servicemat, the old Pan Power Bay. We'll have use for it whenever, whenever we want, actually. So it's actually a media source for us. I do a baseball podcast and, and, um, it's, it, it's a great source of information. And in the, obviously the source of information we have is through the Newcastle news. Now you have a different media source to get information out. That's all it is. Yeah, and, you know, for everybody here on council and for, uh, the administration, uh, it just, it gives you an opportunity to be in front of the people and tell people, you know, what, what we're doing, what's going on.
Yeah, and again, the feasibility of it still has to be truly assessed. Um, Westminster was off, so I've sent out emails to, to talk with them again. And they've been really deceptive in the time they've reached out before to sit down with us and talk to us about, um, just all the info and outs about the system X works. And then, um, again, this resolution will just open that door to allow Newcastle Podcast to kind of, you know, participate in those type of discussions. So they're at the table to, um, to hear what they need and what they do.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Uh, purchase request, uh, the request for a resolution for our review is from Lieutenant Kummel. Three thousand four hundred twenty-six dollars fifty-five cent check to Mark Supply Company for three ballistic vests with pouches and tags for the three newest officers to be paid with police equipment funds. Oh, one, point four one oh, point zero zero, point two two five. Questions, comments? None. Thirteen thousand four hundred twenty for seventy-four hundred in twenty twenty-four and six thousand in twenty twenty-five to purchase lock cameras for the Borlenger Playground area to be paid with police forfeiture funds. Questions or comments? Okay, moving on. We have attached request for the resolution and a co-star for our review, consideration from Brian Eifel for a Hyundai Will Loader in amount of one hundred seventy-four thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars. This does not include an extended warranty of a five-year, four-thousand-hour warranty in the amount of nine thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars from Highway Equipment Company to be paid from the twenty twenty-four liquid fuel funds. Oh, one, point five oh two, point zero zero, point oh three one. Um, he has a thing, funding quotes with the best rate offered from the F N D Equipment Finance of five point nine forty-nine percent. Annual payment of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred forty-six dollars and twenty-five cents with a one-time documentation fee of six fifty. Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
I actually received, I had put out four finance quotes, um, three came back, um, prior to the agendas with F N D being the best. I had a better one come in today, um, from Bancorp. And it is an interest rate of three point three seven percent with a payment of thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. And they're willing to waive the documentation fee. So that would be my recommendation to.
Do you need a motion for that?
We would just put it on the agenda for Thursday, but I would recommend using them.
Three point three percent interest.
Three point three seven, yeah.
Yeah, that.
And I found them because they're a government municipal leasing corporation, so they just do governments. And I just found them on Google search because I was frustrated with the high rates. And when he came back with this today, I emailed him to confirm and he said, yep, because your government is open-ended with no buyout, will waive the fees and your payment will be thirty-seven eight eighty for five years.
Okay, good. Okay. That will be on the, on the, okay. Okay, resolutions on the table, there are two. Uh, resolution twenty-three dash one seventy-eight, property development and lease option agreement with United Way. This is tabled at the nine twenty-one meeting. Questions or comments, Ted? Read this.
I don't remember.
They're all made on table, okay. Second resolution, twenty twenty-three dash two oh eight, is the lease purchase of the twenty-three Ford F three fifty for the Parks and Recreation Department. Again, tabled at the ten nineteen council meeting. That was stacked. Okay, orders for consideration, there are none. Orders on the table, which is attached for the caucus agenda. Council Bill twenty twenty-four dash oh one, approving the request of investment properties two on behalf of owner Emilio R. Valentine to subdivide the property into two lots. Tabled at the January twenty, oh, this ordinance will be acted on the January twenty.
It can be, yeah. How was the public hearing?
Correct. Correct, okay. Okay, conditional use request, there are none and for discussion. A tax exempt properties within the city of Newcastle. I guess this is mine. Yes, um, I, you know, obviously, as unpopular as this may sound, um, we're in the business of that makes some money. Uh, there's a number of churches that have been declared, uh, they're decommissioned and, uh, they are no longer places of worship, which means, uh, in many cases that they've lasted, they've lost their tax exemption. There's even one that was actually in a paper the other day, Croton. Croton Church to close, they've decommissioned that church. That's all property. That's property that should be taxed. So, um, I'm requesting council and I'm requesting, uh, the administration to take a look at the feasibility of us beginning to, um, request property taxes from those places. Questions or comments to that?
Well, let me just say this, generally speaking, um, a church is exempt for their places of worship and for any facility that, um, is essential to them carrying on their, um, their church activities. So for instance, you know, a parking lot would be, um, if they had a, um, a residence where the minister lived, generally that's excluded, but if it's, if it was determined that somehow the church also, it was vital to their, um, use. They, you know, held services or Bible studies or there, it could, it's very ca, or it's very fact sensitive. Keep in mind too that they would qualify as tax exempt as a church, but they may also qualify as tax exempt as a charitable organization depending on what they do. And again, it's very fact sensitive on what they use the building for. If it's completely vacant and they don't use it all, I, you know, you would have a good argument that, um, they should be, um, ta, or they could be taxed.
And it, oh, yeah, go ahead, John.
The procedure for that is
The procedure for that, if you want to challenge exempt status, it can't be done at any time. It has to be done once a year. The municipalities have the right to challenge the exemption status through assessment appeals. At the county level, the board renders a decision and then either party has the right to appeal. So generally, it does end up in a court of common pleas. And there's a real specific task that a nonprofit has to meet, depending on the type of organization it is, to establish that it should be tax-exempt. It's called the Huck test. It's a court case that dictates what's required to be a nonprofit or a tax-exempt. So if a property is not being used for its tax-exempt purpose or if the owner of the property is not a nonprofit, that should be, you know, almost administratively, I believe, taken care of by the assessment office. If it's not, that use isn't done to them or if that use changes and it would trigger a taxation, it could be up to the municipalities to initiate that sort of appeal. That being said, you know, if there are, there's thirty percent of the property in the city is owned by nonprofits, something like that. It's a very large number. So it's worthwhile taking a second look, seeing it out.
And in my research, it's rather, it's very ambiguous as to where. Some, many communities have already done this with decommissioned churches.
How do you define usage?
The actual use.
Yeah, well, they have one funeral.
No, one service a month is not.
So how do they define?
Well, I mean, it's.
Is it two, three, four?
It's a regular use. So, no. Answer question or the case is where it's been a couple times a year and they said that's not.
So what's the threshold, you know?
Well, that's, that's what we'll find out then. But interestingly enough, though, once they, once these churches decommission themselves and they're no longer places of worship, they're just empty properties. That's what they're doing. So I think it's incumbent upon us to take a look at it, you know, I mean.
No, and just because a church building is a church building doesn't make it.
Tax-exempt, it does not.
The church sells that property to a private property, I'm just fact on the tax.
Sure it is.
Or if it leases it to a for-profit, you know, and that's non-exempt activity, it's a tax.
Yeah, so it's, it's really, I mean, we would be negligent if we didn't take a little hard look at this.
Well, it's often heard the point that not only any nonprofit should be, for example, any nonprofit that has to give property or buildings.
Absolutely. And there's probably some out there that we can actually give property tax on. We are at that, out of Act forty-seven. We're out. We need to make money. Okay, any other questions to that?
I don't think we'll do anything with that or.
Well, that's up to the, now it's going to be in your hands and.
Well, I think it's up to the, I mean, council is, that's something we want to look at, I guess, is the point. Because I'm going to want to move forward with, right?
Yeah, yeah, that is. And that's something I would like to move forward with. So that would be up to, obviously, the majority of council.
What are we looking for, like, just to, just to sample?
What we're looking for, what we're moving forward is to see if they have actually lost their tax-exempt tax. That's what we're looking at.
And who's going to decide?
Of course.
Well, we would, yeah, well, we would give a little opinion.
Yeah.
I guess, but I believe it needs to know.
So what Teddy is asking, what was asking, is there enough, is there some, some interest in council to pursue this? That's, that's really what it is.
I don't want to sue him. What you're suggesting doesn't part a resolution.
No.
Your issue of the request to the administration.
To the administration. Exactly right. Correct. That would be correct. And obviously, we would need the majority of council to pay for having interest in pursuing this.
In a particular litigation, would that be approved?
Right. So is everybody in agreement to take a look at it? Okay.
Very good.
Okay. Update on the twenty twenty-three demolition contract and twenty twenty-four demolition list. We have been demoing a couple homes. The one on that Mr. Rosano took a good look on and he shared it. That house is finally coming down. I've gotten phone calls from the neighbors. They're so thankful that that house is finally coming down. If you take a look at it, it's been a nice one for years. But Chris is going to bring us up to date on the rest of it.
Yes, absolutely. The city demos from twenty twenty-three, both city and CDBG are underway. Noticeances proceeding, to proceed, have been issued. The contracts are fully engaged and are working towards that. Department head, Anthony Choffey is contributing the work on the list that he has for the twenty twenty-four year. He's submitting title searches and on a regular basis, actually. And I have the list here if any council members want to view it. But there's a number of properties that, in each ward, some ward-specific and some commercial ones that they're going into on a regular basis. So again, that process, we'll probably typically go off the bid for that kind of middle year once he has a full list. But all the funding, again, with the budget passed last year, is in place for that. So with the update, again, on the twenty twenty-three, everything's fully underway. We did have to do some, on the CDBG side, miss some environmental reviews completed, tier two environmental reviews completed. But that's all to take care of and those properties should be grassed here, you know, within the next few weeks.
How many are there?
There was twenty-one in total. Another county was doing three, had three done. Under them, I believe, one of those was taken care of by the property owners as well.
And Chris, once a few of the homes that we demoed, then obviously, the lot is for sale, correct?
Uh, I mean, lots of the business is still owned by somebody's lease.
I see. You mean, somebody hadn't owned that home that was demoed, they still own that property?
Yeah, we filed demo lease on it. And whether you can collect it or not, really depends on the property.
What's the depend we need?
Well, if they sell it, then there's going to be a link to have to pay as the.
Paying when they sell.
If they sell it, but sometimes.
They walk away from it.
Yeah, sometimes we face the question of, is it better to allow that property to be backed on the tax rolls and marketable rather than collecting or collecting the name? So, but that's a decision.
All right, Pennsylvania taxing mechanism for homeroom communities. This is an interesting one. I'm of the opinion that the key to economic revival is that we have to take control of our commercial assets. So we're looking at ways to take control of our commercial assets. The commercial assets would be the empty buildings downtown. As everybody knows, those buildings have been, remain stagnant and empty for years and years and years. So to think that all of a sudden that that's going to change, I think it's a pipe dream. I think it's, we have a better chance of marketing and doing something with them if we take control of it. Obviously, that takes dollars. So we looked at different tax mechanisms for homeroom communities and we found a number of them. One is the SERGE. Chris?
We, so we looked at just quite a few different examples. I know that Mary Letts goes in to take a look at and do some research on. This one was actually in Texas, but it was a prime example of what could be utilized here in the state of Pennsylvania. CRIS, which I think I've sent out an email to all the council on that program. CRIS is an opportunity, I believe, that is, you know, one of, you know, from an administrative council perspective, that is easily, not easily, but is, we could implement through the process that DCE does allow. The CRIS is the city revitalization, revitalization and improvement zone. Some examples of this right now are Lancaster, they do this in their community. And Erie just actually is going through the process now, which I was able to get on the call today with a council member there. What CRIS allows is essentially, you designate a hundred and thirty mile, or a hundred and thirty acre designation, whether that's in the heart of your downtown or in corporate and also some of the maybe the industrial areas, wherever. It can't be more than a hundred and thirty acres. Within that hundred and thirty acres, what it allows for you to do is you take a baseline of the taxes, both state and local taxes, for your first year, you take a baseline and see how many of the businesses, existing businesses, how much they pay in taxes. So throughout that time, you're getting, you're establishing a baseline. And one of the important things for council and the administration to consider is through that you create an authority. With the Municipal Authorities Act of Pennsylvania, you're allowed to create authority. And CRIS, you start your CRIS through the authorities. So we don't start it here. We started through the authority where you're required to have at least a five-person board. Once you establish the authority, they do the research and they provide, they do the application and they submit all the information and the feasibility study to the state to allow the CRIS to be established. Once the CRIS is established, essentially, what they, in the baseline here, is to fill. For easy numbers, if the baseline is a million dollars in that area and that's the amount of state and local taxes that's being paid from those local businesses, we're able to bond that money out to go get a bond, say, let's say, ten million dollars. Ten million dollars will be used in that CRIS zone for construction, improvement, purchasing, acquisition of properties in that area in which you can establish revitalization. Local businesses such as, you know, retail properties. You can do bars, restaurants, and that nature.
And you can acquire some.
You can acquire those buildings through the CRIS. The way the CRIS, it's not a tax on the businesses. That's important. The taxes that will go to the state, to your local government, such as an amusement tax, a selling use tax, hotel occupancy tax, personal income tax, local service tax, earned income tax, and also any taxes or purchases of liquor, wine, and more, you know, beverages. What, instead of that going to the state, it will come back into the CRIS. So the CRIS would use that, those funds to pay back, pay down that bond, that bond issue and to recycle that money back through the CRIS zone to establish more opportunities in terms of revitalization. Where it's, where kind of it's interesting is where, is how the money is issued. Again, researching this and speaking to representatives of both Erie and Lancaster, there's opportunity, the opportunity to offer funding. So CRIS, the law states that, and I'm not a lawyer, but I did read the law. The law does state that it's for every dollar of private equity that's used on the property, there's five dollars from the CRIS can be used. So it's a huge incentive for development in this designation. Again, it's just a matter of assessing to see if this is a good opportunity. And where this kind of came up, I presented this to Representative Brown last July as an opportunity as we acted the Act forty-seven. With Marla Brown's help, we did do some research because the guidelines on DCE website then stated that you have to have municipality, the city, which we were third class, you know, home rule charter have to have at least thirty thousand. So the goal there was to, you know, influence legislature to say, hey, what about the little guys, you know, communities with, you know, twenty thousand.
Twenty-two, twenty-three thousand, right?
Which we found out that in the, in the law, not on the guidelines, it's a different document. The guideline says one thing, but the law actually says that municipality of our makeup can have up to, it does allow for twenty thousand, communities up to twenty thousand. So we would fall, we would be eligible to start this designation and look deeper into it. Again, you know, some of the just property, preliminary things from a council perspective would be, again, establishing, we've worked in this process with our lawyers to establish an authority, hold a public hearing, identify what businesses or entities in this CRIS area and then, you know, again, put out the notice for it. But that's the, in a nutshell, that is what the CRIS is. And I'll be happy to share more of that information with any of you all.
And what it does is it gives us the ability to, to control the economic future of this community. It really does. Other communities that have used this have been very successful. Other states have used it under different names, Plan B taxes, where it's a five cent or a half a cent on every dollar spent. And it goes back into the city government and it's discretionary spending for them. This is the same thing, only under different names and different ways to do it. But it gives us discretionary funds to use for our own economic future, which I think is essential for us. Seriously, and most definitely, I believe that we would do a better job of marketing the buildings if we owned them than what the private owners do. And I've said this for a hundred years, the private owners who own these buildings, who are from all over the country, couldn't give two hooves to us. If we control it, we have a real investment in this, in this downtown and in the future of this community. That's why I believe this is so.
I wonder, what are the leading questions that we'd get from the community economic development? Primary economic development, when a business is looking to come into the city, what incentives would be out of? Quite honestly, we really, the city itself does not have too many, other than our revolving loan fund, which is, you know, a good loan program, you know, on a, on the banking side, there is the new market tax credit, which from what I hear is fairly underutilized. But this will give us one more mechanism to allow businesses to come in and offer them, you know, some type of incentives to get, you know, to have for, to do some revitalization and development in the community. Some prime examples right now, we talked earlier about the Hunterman Building. They're looking at putting a restaurant, you know, apartments and some type of hotel. The long-term future or long-term vision is to put some type of hotel in that property. Again, the same question that they have, is there any incentive that we would have? That's a major development opportunity. And right now, let's say if there's a restaurant or ward goes in there or a hotel, those tax dollars are going back to the state. They're not coming back here. We would be, we would be able to support that, by helping finance that growth. One of the examples that we provided from, that was provided from Erie is Erie Insurance, a major corporation in Erie right now. They do stuff outside of Erie, outside of the state. They'd be bringing through their CRIS, they would look at bringing those companies back into the state or into Pennsylvania to be able to, you know, invest more into the revitalization of their, of their end. So knowing, it's kind of similar to kind of how MPP kind of works. Rather than the company sending their money to the state, they keep those dollars locally and they, and they give an incentive, giving them one to five ratio of money that they will be able to obtain from this. Lancaster uses it. They have a baseball team. We read in their resolution today, they have numerous, actually numerous resolutions on how the funds were used and accessed. But yeah.
And you have a one point seven million dollars for baseball.
One point seven million dollars for baseball stadium to.
Under CRIS, under CRIS.
And again, it's the opportunities before us, I think, we can all sit here and identify a couple of different businesses and opportunities here. But again, without saying any names, there's been businesses that have come here. I just met with the businesses, this person in the post office on Jefferson Street. Opportunities like that are great because then, you know, again, we see, we see growth in our community. Again, the feasibility of it all is the responsibility of those that are on the court of the authority to get the numbers and the information required to submit the application for a CRIS. But again, it's a step, I believe it's a step forward for economic development in the city. And again, there's, it's a hot topic and the communities that are trying to establish it. But I think if we, obviously, look within, everyone's interested here, everybody's kind of has spoken about this and their involvement on the CDC, we know the need to find some type of mechanism to promote economic development. We've made considerable sacrifices for the community with this purchase of mercantile tax with the parking in the city of Newcastle. It's time to move forward. And again, this does not hurt our businesses at all. If anything, it should help businesses who want to grow, want to expand, want to change locations and centralize themselves, maybe within the district. It gives them that opportunity without having that financial hit on another tax being raised.
Very good. Any questions? Everybody on board with this? Okay, moving on. Under D, council vacancy for two-year term. Mr. Cameron won, as everyone knows, both seats, four-year term, two-year seat and a two-year term. Vacated the two-year term to take the four-year term, which means we have a vacancy. Questions, comments on that? Anybody?
The process we're going to have, we're opening it up for open applications and on next, how are we doing that?
I am on, I can tell you that I am on the record from August that I was very, very impressed with the council candidates, all of them. And I've been on record that whoever gets the most votes and loses, I would support that person for the council seat. It's my opinion that anybody who puts their name on a ballot. It's my opinion that anybody who puts their name on a ballot um and earns the seat, as far as I'm concerned, they've earned it, even though they've lost the election, I believe that they had the audacity and the guts that it takes to put your name on a ballot today because as everyone knows, uh when you put your name on on the ballot, uh you immediately open yourself up for criticism, you immediately open yourself up for um all sorts of things. Uh and then it takes a lot of work to get they come here and get elected. Um the next vote getter was uh Mr. Eric Francis, who lost by approximately, I could be wrong, by seventy-some votes. That uh uh gives him some um popularity into this seat. Uh so if you're asking me where I am with that, I'm going to stick with my commitment and my original word that I would support Eric Francis for the seat. I don't know where other candidates are, who who they would be. Um and I don't know what the thought of council would be on this, but I'm just giving you guys what my thought is. Uh I I think that it is um it's incumbent upon the the city or this council to move fast. We have a huge agenda, we have major things to to discuss and accomplish here. And so I would say let's cut to the chase and just put Mr. Francis in that seat. Anybody?
I'll do that. So I I have a little bit, I look at this a little bit differently. So from my perspective, you know, I obviously I I understand and respect what you're saying about anyone who puts their name on the ballot because that that is correct. Now, where I would disagree is I look at it from a perspective of he had, Mr. Francis had two uh chances to win and and the voters rejected him, right? So even though sure he might have only lost by the next seat by seventy-six votes, he got beat on two different ballots, so I have over two hundred and three hundred.
And he poked the tip?
No.
No?
No. So I so I I beat him two hundred and three hundred some votes, I believe, on both ballots. Myself, I'm not saying from the last verse, I'm talking about for myself. So so I look at that from a little bit of a different perspective. Uh so so at that point, I don't think, I wouldn't be in favor of bringing him on. Uh and you know, and I told you guys privately, I believe most of you, I'd be in favor in favor of bringing Eddie Bogart on. Uh he's on the CDC, uh he's been on there for about a year and a half now, uh so he understands where we're trying to go. Uh so that's my position on that.
Um but a- again, you know, the only issue is this, it's fun how many votes the person got, he did get some votes. And I believe because of that, then it's an earned seat. Um I I'm just, I like people who earn things and I believe that he earned. I take what you're considering, I take what you say, um and I understand it, but I like I like the position earned. And I think uh Mr. Francis has earned that seat. Uh Mr. Roseanne, comments?
Well, uh in every uh, we come from a background with athletics, there's winners and there's losers. Uh come back from the perspective of education, you know, there's people that work really hard, make good grades, other ones that don't. So what I'm talking about, I think I concur with what you're saying, uh Mark, is there's an effort. He put forth an effort, he spent money, he went after, he opened himself up to public ridicule. He, you know, went door to door, whatever we all did when we were campaigning, you know, and that deserves something, that deserves consideration. Is it deserved, you know? Should we not look at other people? No, I I I don't think so. I think we should bring him in maybe and interview him there, but uh, you know, it deserves the consideration because he put his name on, hey listen, this this is, you know, we all did it, we all know it, we all did it, you know? And so that means something. In our in our constitutional government, you know, votes matter. And the only one I know that went for this and got votes was uh the next person in any line was Eric. So I I think that I think that uh deserves a a deep consideration.
Well, are 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 you saying that you would you would support Mr. Francis?
Yes.
Are you saying that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, uh Mr. Warren?
Um. For the most part, I agree, um for him to have this ring on a ballot, he definitely deserved. Um they deserve it. Um I'll be more open to an application process. I don't want to, we might have a candidate out there who then wants to run. I think if we open up for applications, I think we might be able to find a good candidate who will help us uh move this to the into the great future. So I'll be in favor of an application process.
Mr. Reader?
I like David's idea as an application process, but uh Eric Francis would I find to support because again, I believe he lost by sixty some votes to be exact. I mean, I know he didn't, he's the next one in line and, you know, like you said, you know, you put your name on a ballot, we all did. You know, it's tough to go out there, especially if you work or, you know, you have a family, you, you know, you put your name on a ballot because, you know, you want change and you I would fully support him. But if we want to go out there and put, you know, do an interview process, I mean, we can do that too.
Um, Mr. Roger?
I love the idea of interviewing process because that's personal for me because I just went through it, right? So I stood here and I had to I had to have a conversation with the uh with council and said, you know, why I felt like I was one of the best uh candidates to represent the people. Um I don't feel like this is the next man up um position. I don't feel like we need to limit ourselves to a roster. I think, you know, we have a, we have a a city of folks out there who, uh, you know, potentially are willing to serve. I understand exactly what you're saying, you know, Eric Francis put his name on the on the ballot. Um and he opened him up, himself up for scrutiny. That was a year ago, you know, we had to have our names on the ballots a year ago. Uh, you know, how many people out there? Uh Eddie Bogart is a perfect example that who have over the last year have seen kind of some of the things that are are happening and want to be involved and want to be a part of. I think we are tasked with building the strongest leadership team possible for the city. And I think opening this up to see how many um applications we would get, how much interest we would get as opposed to limiting ourselves. I believe what you say as far as expediting the uh the process and getting uh, you know, getting this leadership team uh, you know, up and running, uh but I think getting this right is the most important part in my mind. Uh, you know, anytime, you know, at at work when we when we talk about getting statements out, dealing with and dealing with uh with anything from a PR standpoint, you want it right for first, um and that's kind of where I'm at, I'm the the like to us to get this right. So, you know, if Eric throws his name in the hat and comes here and interviews and we feel as a council that he's the best person, Eddie throws his name in the hat, comes here and interviews and we feel this is, he's the best person, or somebody else who feels like they have they uh called to serve, I think uh, I think that's the the right thing for us to do. Look, that is my opinion.
Don't they all have to interview? Is that mandatory or not?
Well, no, you put it out for interviews, yeah. I mean, you're gonna ask, I mean, you're gonna ask for applicants.
Eddie, is that is that mandatory?
No, it's not, council can't interview anyone. Um so, you know, you have forty-five days from.
Yes.
From the.
Yeah, the the time is stressing, you know?
A lot.
And and again, I I and I understand what you guys are saying and everybody makes good points, you know? My my thought, again, and then we're gonna shut it and move on. My thought is this, um we got so much to do here, we really do. And and if you're asking me, if if I know that there that there's support for either Mr. Bogart or Mr. Francis, then let's just do it because we got so much to do. Do I want to waste time for interviews to people who have no chance? Not really. I don't want to waste their time and I don't want to waste our time. So if it's gonna come to those two people, I think we need to sit down and say, which one do we want? Now, if you're not set a hundred percent on either one of those guys and and you and you're gonna give anybody who comes in here to interview a fair chance, then that's a different ballgame. But for me, I'm telling you, I'm going with Eric Francis. Jesus can come here and interview, I'm going with Eric Francis because that's what I believe. But that's a little extreme. No, it isn't, not just Tommy.
I'm kidding you.
Okay? So I think that that's that's what we have to decide.
So we got till the uh forty-five days.
From the last, when you not, when you vacate, when you announced that there was a vacancy, which was what?
January eleventh, so we got till February twenty-sixth, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong.
Is that right there?
Whatever, yeah.
Is it calendar days or just?
Forty-five days, calendar days. And so, you know, after that, then any uh voter, I think, I think it's a voter can pass the petition to court and then make a decision. So it's not like it automatically just goes to the court, you know?
Oh, you mean it on an even, on an on an even vote, three-three vote, is that what you're saying?
If it was a three-three vote, it would.
Goes to court.
I'll give that petition to court, yeah.
Yeah, goes to court, correct.
Right, right.
And and.
Absolutely, you can, yeah, you can vote at any time if you want.
And since um uh Brian did bring up Mr. Bogart, this great guy, I know Eddie very well, that could really, no question. Um, okay. Uh so that's for you guys to to decide which way you want to go. All right, moving on. So, what?
I just know if it was.
And is there a consensus then? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I mean, they're on the on the event hour, you have to.
It's February twenty-fourth.
February twenty-fourth?
Yep.
There should be a. It's a process. Yeah, I mean, there should be a, yeah, I mean. I guess there needs to be some direction on whether you're going to ask for applicants or not. If not, then are you gonna put it on the agenda? Uh, I mean, just even know where to go with that.
I get it.
I have no problem with interviews. I have no problem with interviews. I'm trying to think, but I, you want to interview, interview. And I, in twenty years of education, I didn't put much muscle in them. Twelve years as college football coach, I didn't put muscle in them because people can come and, nah, they get interviewed. They get flat out interviewed, okay? And then I saw them go in a classroom, done. Okay, go on a football field, done. So interviews don't all, in my profession, they don't always, you know, tell you who's the best person.
Yeah, but we're asking you, do you want to disappoint somebody right now or you want to interview? What do you want to do?
Well, they've got enough votes to vote.
I don't know that, that's what I'm going right now.
Just did.
You want to interview or you want to?
No, I don't want to.
David?
I'm not sold on Mr. Francis or Mr. Bogart or someone interested in it.
Okay, very good. Eric?
I say interview, do, but but do we want to advertise for a certain date?
Not to advertise, you just announce it.
Like if you're interested, send a letter of interest by the twenty-sixth, let's say, in the week of one.
So you're for interview?
Yeah, I mean, and like I said, I mean, I'm nine-nine percent sure we'd probably vote for Eric Francis, but we can interview.
I'm not for interview, but that's okay. Uh Brian, you're for interview and Eric, you're for interview, correct? Okay, then it's an interview. Yeah, what's that deadline? February twenty-one?
I would say the end of the week.
Oh, you mean for the for applicants, yeah.
Do you want to interview the four caucus, the four caucus here? Will we get the public period? Public period?
And when do you have?
That's the next, you mean the next caucus?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the next caucus will be the day.
And I I think then we can appoint somebody the eighth, I would say, there's plenty of time.
I think there's plenty of time.
Because we can interview the the week of the twenty-ninth.
You could?
No, right, do you have a single special meeting for that or in the public?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably so, we're talking, did you, did you do a public meeting there?
Yeah.
Good, then that's on the fifth. Do it on the fifth, we can do it on the fifth.
We'll let it.
So what did you, okay, so.
We have a special meeting.
Close the business on the twenty-sixth, be one applicant, which is fine. And then did I hear you say you want to interview on the fifth or did I hear you say you want to interview the week of the twenty-ninth?
Why don't we do it on the fifth? We're here, just do it on the fifth, we can do it, start it at five o'clock. Is that good? I mean, we're talking ten fifteen minutes. Per interview.
Depending on how many we get, we can, you know, whatever, we can start with time.
Yeah, that that's a big point. Depending on how many we get, we'll we'll determine the time we start. Yeah. Okay.
The applicants through, I'm sorry, applicants by close of business, one twenty-sixth, twenty-second. Two-five. And or to be determined.
To be determined by the number of applicants. Okay.
And we'll decide after, after Monday, we'll know.
Well, no, Monday and we'll point that person Thursday. We I I believe we need to expedite it, we can do it Monday and then point that person Thursday.
No, I bet you'll have by the end of, like, next Monday, comment, and then we can pick the time.
And then we pick the time and we can, we can pick the time by email. Is that, can we?
Yeah, we just gotta advertise it, that's what I need now.
Okay.
How many days is it on, please?
Uh, we know Monday, I think it's twenty-four, forty-eight. We have Monday at five, we know.
Okay, under E, and this is a good thing, guys, uh accommodation to former mayor Anthony Mistrangelo. Uh Mayor Mistrangelo served twelve years as the mayor here, as everyone knows. Uh he and he certainly uh governed under very trying times. Uh the city into Act forty-seven and uh because of his efforts and um and twelve years and then with uh Mr. Frye and this council. Uh but spearheaded by Mr. Mistrangelo for twelve years, uh he guided the city out of Act forty-seven. And uh I think council would all agree that he deserves accommodation for his years of service and dedication of service. Uh he could have been um down in Florida enjoying his golden years, but he decided to come here and and work for twelve years and and did what he did and guided the city out of Act forty-seven as well as this administration, present administration did as well. But he was here for twelve years, that deserves an accommodation. Everybody agree? Okay. Very good.
So do you want to do that on Thursday?
We'll do that, um, yeah, but you're gonna have to put it together and we can write it up.
Yeah, once you give me the language, we are.
I can help you tomorrow.
Okay, perfect.
Then you can email all these guys, make sure they're on board. Okay. Um heating and cooling at the Cascade Park Dance Pavilion, uh we talked about marketing Cascade Park and doing a lot of events there. Uh part of that would be to market the dance pavilion. Obviously, we we are losing business because it's not heated or it's not out of air conditioning. So um we could possibly go out and see what that cost would be and then make a determination by council administration to see if it's cost effective to uh to do it, put heating and cooling in it and then see if we can make that money back by having events there, weddings, what and whatnot. So all we all we want to do is go out to have somebody come in and give us an estimate on what that would cost. Okay?
Did we do this prior?
We did it before, but it's been a few years, so we'd have to get updated quotes uh with today's pricing on what it would cost.
Because it was expensive, right?
Yeah. It's over a hundred thousand. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
With today's pricing, then so we can get the quotes, what's the different company that this is new.
Yeah. Uh I I guess, I had a couple builders come in and said that they would go in and just give us a guesstimate of what that would cost. And then we'd have to make that determination, you know, whether or not it's feasible for us economically feasible for us to do that. That's all. Depends on what that cost would be. I'm thinking it's gonna be pretty high, yeah, yeah. But at least, I mean, just for us to know.
Nothing special, you don't get a, about the cost today.
No, we can just get somebody in here to do that. Okay, lastly is the uh CIP update for Sylvan Heights. Um talking about Sylvan Heights, we're always looking to make more money at Sylvan Heights. And um uh we're looking at Chris and I, and we'll be discussing, we want to share with you guys that we've uh looking at establishing by some remodeling in the clubhouse, set up a bar and a little bit of a red restaurant inside there, um which would cost us very little because uh any remodeling, we're talking about furniture, we're talking about putting a bar in there, TVs, uh we already have a beer license there so that the uh people who who come and play there can, you know, sit down, have a beer. Um and again, it's retail for us, it's money for us. Uh we're looking at um talking with um the uh the supervisor there, Mr. Demus. Um he's agreed and Mr. Haas have agreed to uh put forth uh their um their best efforts to make that happen. And uh Mr. uh Demus has even talked about getting certified uh for uh being able to spray chemicals, which chemicals is going to save us a lot of money in that way as well. So what we need from council is just an approval by us going to uh turn in the uh the clubhouse into a little bit more respectable. into a little bit more respectable, uh, venue for our golfers and, and similar to what other, uh, golf courses do. Very similar to what other golf courses do.
And these funds, if we look at it, we have roughly fifty thousand dollars in the CIP at the golf course, which could be used for that. Um, again, the renovations of the clubhouse has been a topic of discussion for many years. It's just a matter of how we're gonna do that, um, whether it's going to be volunteer led. Uh, but with, uh, a lot of the tasks and improvements that have been going on, we made a decision last year to bring on a staff and, you know, to build our sign and do some of the upgrades to the park. We also can utilize, utilize that personnel and then also potentially some outside, um, contractors to, to, that, that area. Again, in terms of our numbers right now, we don't have that. It's just, uh, we'll engage the administration of the course to, to look at, you know, what all that will entail in terms of cost, but the goal is to use the CIP at this time.
Okay.
We just, just did numerous renovations in-house for the concession area. We did through basing and hand washing the sink, some flooring, uh, to meet the requirements for our health license. So some things have already been taken, have already taken place, but this is more of the creative venue in a space, which is, um, possibly new seating, flooring, uh, making doors that outside, uh, upgrades to the patio that's already existing there, um, and the stair casing to go down to the, uh, stone patio that was created with a fireplace. So just kind of make it a little more functional area, um, in addition to what we already have established. And the top deliver license does cover in addition to the bottom. So it just, I mean, it would be, that area would be open up, open to potential, and maybe this is maybe the only thing that council terms of legislatively what happened in that is put the price on any other area, um, if it's used for any bridal parties or showers or any type of events outside of just the day-to-day golf, golf concession.
I'd just like to see a question on it. And, and then obviously, so i- if the registers were to remain downstairs, you have to have two people staffed. How many people do we have ramp certified right now? And then is that, are they gonna absorb those hours or does that mean we need more part-time help? Because we only have so much budget for part-time help. So I would like to see more information on that.
Yeah, would absolutely. Yeah, and, and, great questions, right? Obviously, I, I was out there and there's so much potential there, just like Chris said. I mean, we could rent a place out. It's for showers and for, yeah, small graduations. But, uh, yeah, it would probably necessitate a part-time person who would then be paid out of the proceeds that we had taken. Possibly, I mean, obviously, that's going to be our decision and administrative decision. But the potential is there. It's, it, and, and what it does is, don't forget, you know, the only golf courses now, and obviously in the city, are going to be us and gas facilities. And, you know, green metals is close. So, um, it, I think it's incumbent upon us to compete at the same level that these other, uh, golf courses have. Uh, and some of that is amenities. And this is an amenity, an amenity that we have the potential to provide and it's probably incumbent upon us to, to just take a good heart and look at it. Obviously, we will see what that cost would be to see if we can recoup it during the summer and fall of the, of the patrons that go there.
So the idea is just right now just to evaluate?
Well, we want to look at the cost, the cost of the renovation of the clubhouse, the cost of the, yeah, and then make decisions as to what, what we could possibly, um, what we could possibly gain on the revenue side from that.
Okay. If I could take one step back, the, the grant opportunity, um, this probably, this goes forward to the, after the parking desk. The grant opportunity with the COVID ARPA PA multi-purpose community facilities program. It was open today. Um, I didn't put it on the agenda because they're gonna have a call and a webinar on the thirtieth to see what, um, to get more detail to this program and have some specific questions, which I can gear those questions towards that facility to see if the funds can be utilized. Right now, it, it just says in the, um, municipally owned properties. Uh, so we did use that during COVID. We use it for health. Some of the things that it can go towards, um, you know, public facilities, work, education, and health monitoring. We did use that pretty happily during kind of the COVID years. We have, and we do now, we have a lot of health fairs there, uh, Dodge O, UPMC, different opportunities. We use that space for health screening, um, in conjunction with use of the fireworks, uh, the American Red Cross, not the fireworks, the fire department. So that could be a possible use, uh, just getting more detail when I have that call on the thirtieth, which if it will work for that facility, I'd be happy to put it on the agenda for, uh, the next agenda now for council. But the maximum, or I'm sorry, the minimum project could be two, two hundred fifty thousand dollars and the maximum cannot exceed two million dollars, so.
And that was a capital fund, proper capital.
Uh, so the multi-purpose, yeah, I think I sent it out to you.
Yeah.
Is the multi-purpose, um, sorry, COVID nineteen ARPA multi-purpose community facilities program.
And do we have access to those funds?
That's a great, it's a competitive program. It has forty-some million dollars in through competitive process. Uh, but again, what we would do is typically, you know, we'd engage our engineers. Uh, we'd get costs in terms of how much it would be to get, will we want out there? And that's to, from what your notes are here, heating and cooling. And I know there's some capital funds right now to redo the flooring in there. But, um, when we looked at it in the past, uh, the aesthetics of it, um, to ensure that it would be properly heated and cooled right away, we would have the aesthetics, you know, the high ceilings and the kind of the barn look would go away because you'd have to have some type of drop ceiling to keep the heating and cooling brand area, which if, again, if it opens the door again to more rentals and year-round opportunities, I think it is one of the high, most coveted areas to do like large weddings. It's a huge space and it can truly be marketed.
We can get grant money. We can get grant money to do that. We can turn that around.
But once I, let me have the, I'll have the call on the thirtieth to try to ask some more questions. It says municipal facilities, but it really doesn't go into details of what type. So I just want to make sure it's not like a municipal, like our building, like the city hall or a police station or something like that, but it's more, if that's, this is a true community space and I think it beats the criteria of what the God wants to say. But I just want to double check to make sure that that's what it's, um, it's.
Yeah, if you don't mind doing, uh, doing a little homework on that and, uh, and coming back to us because I think that, uh, that grant opportunity, I think, uh, there's, there's several things that we can discuss for that grant opportunity because it does go up to two million dollars and it's a no-match grant. You know, so I think that's a huge opportunity and more that we could build a case for a multi-use space, uh, something that benefits the community. Uh, but we need to figure out exactly what in our city it gives us the best opportunity to get that grant.
Yeah. And I think that, you know, we originally also looked at this building and tried to maximize the capacity of it. But to truly turn this into like a community space would be probably over two million dollar mark. Uh, so the second option, you know, I'm thinking, and again, that call would be helpful to answer some of those questions or the type of, that is. And we don't house any offices in there, but it's already a true community space. And if we can utilize that to be for, uh, a year-round opportunity, I think it's, it's worth, you know, looking at. This would require installation and a whole lot of work to get it to be, it used to be, I didn't know this until we, we walked it with, uh, uh, ABM. It used, I guess, some of you folks have been here for a long time, would know that that, it didn't always have that frontage. It was a open kind of more of a barn look, I guess. So, yeah.
There's so much potential there. Cascade Park is a wonderful asset. It's a beautiful, beautiful asset. There's just so much potential, what we can do. So, okay. All right. Oh, um. I forgot where this was. Oh, new business. Okay, there you go. Thank you. Twenty twenty-three, do I include city prop, property taxes? It's a one million ninety-one thousand eight hundred thirty-eight dollars and forty-five cents. There's a, do I have to read all these text?
No, that's just embarrassing for reference.
Okay. Okay, under executive session, we went through a, a number of these. I think, uh, are there any more under, we went pending a threatened litigation. We talked about that potential contract under, uh, negotiate under or end negotiations. There are none. Sell lease of property of the city hall. We're going to executive sessions and other property services. Uh, the reminders, there's a public hearing again on Monday, January twenty-second. We already did that. And the city council meeting is on Thursday, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. So I'm assuming that we're going into executive session for, um, under D, numbers one and number two. Right? Yes, sir. So can we adjourn this meeting? Okay, I mean, a motion to adjourn.
Motion.